Okay, it's six o'clock exactly on my computer, so we'll do a roll call. Mr. Cruz. Mrs. Oshie. Mrs. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Welk.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Senator John and Beth. Any discussion? Okay, show of hands to approve. Renee, are you? Okay, just wanted to check. All right, motion carries. So we'll move into the superintendent report. First off.
All right, a couple of items quickly is summer school update. Our plan is to have a live in-person summer school starting in July. We will not have transportation. Due to a couple of reasons, one is there's some funding issues related to that. The byproduct of that as well is I'm sure we're gonna have a huge enrollment, but potentially if we have a smaller enrollment, it provides a little soft opening for the school year. We will do full day, just like normal, provide lunch. But then we just will not provide bus transportation. So we're in the process of getting that together. The administrators are working on doing all the hiring and such as that. Please ask for there ago, we struggling to get teachers, which is an indicator maybe who may not want to come back. Or I thought, being that it was in July, teachers may be on vacation. But she goes, no, we may be turning people away. So we're moving forward with that. One of the things too, and I have this, I didn't add this to this, and I believe I had, I don't remember if I sent out an email on this to everyone, did I send out the teacher absenteeism information? I know I shared, you know, we did the incentive as far as going down the lead days? Well, we had to get that put together for Kelly's budget. And I kind of, when I jumped into it, I go, this is either glass half-full or glass half-empty, depending on our perception. And now, mind you, we ended in March, so it's not quite a full year. And these are the numbers only from ASAP, but we have the financial numbers classified. But these are the staff attendance numbers for our teachers, administrators, counselors, process coordinators, central office, so essentially certified. So 279 individuals. And if you're remembering, you come back to the back-to-school meeting, how many teachers typically are up here to get the perfect attendance? Eight to 10?
Yeah, at the most.
As of, when we left, 39 teachers had perfect attendance.
Wow.
14%. The elementary, 20% of their teachers, which is eight of them, had had perfect attendance, junior high 15, high school 12. Then kind of taking it, this number of staff who had missed two days or less district-wide, 40%, 111. Had missed two days or less. And the rest of the billings were in that kind of the 40% range, junior high at 46%. In this, I also have the FMLA and people that had children are in these numbers. The number of staff that missed five or less days, 272%. 83% in the elementary, 80% to junior high, 65 at the primary, 73 intermediate, 63% at the high school. So 200 out of 279 had missed five or less days at that point. That's exciting, that's gonna have an impact. If we would, I believe that would have on our test scores, I'm glad we're still doing that, for sure. Out of that, then the number of staff who'd missed 10 or more days, 25 people district-wide. And that includes babies and such, right? Or a severe illness. So, I'm kind of breaking that down, so I kind of wanted to see the backend. 254 of the 279 certified people in the ASAP program there, 254 are receiving a check in July. 200 of the 279 are receiving a check of $500. So when you look at that, when you back out really, last year we gave a step, and we did add, you could say we added money to the base, but it was different. Some people got $1,000 added to their base, some got none, some got 50. But I think that's gonna have a huge impact on kids. And it's interesting going through that list and such, and so I think it was a good thing on there. The glass half-empty is when you have a budget issue and whatnot, it's $176,000 of a call in July.
Well, yeah, but isn't some money not spent because of that? So what's, you have to subtract that out.
There's, what this does, it does two things. It makes our substitute number a very finite. Where before, you would look at it, we were giving 12 days. Those have a dollar value on the backend, 30 years from now or whatnot, or whenever I retire, or any teacher retires, is you're gonna get paid $50 a day. So each year, that dollar value was 600 bucks, if they never used any. If an employee used all of them, it was 900 bucks. A thousand bucks at $85 a day. Because if you remember, we went from 12 to 10, which actually decreased that. So the true cost of each day not being used is only $15 a day, $150 per employee. And so, that's where, absolutely, there's savings. And the issue is, we're paying it right now.
In a lump sum.
In a lump sum, and we're paying our teachers versus paying substitutes throughout the year, and...
But that just means we got to keep the money longer, actually. I mean, that helps us collect interest longer.
Collect interest, absolutely, I hadn't even thought about that. And what it does long-term is, in the audit, buried within there, there's an unfunded liability. Which means if the school shut down and everybody put in their unused sick days, and it's several million dollars, is gradually, we're reducing that because we're paying it out as we go. Because those days now don't have those $50. And we're giving it to the employees upfront. When you can use it during your, you know, people are going to school and all that. And it also serves its change of psychology, which is good. The people that were here all the time, you know, I'm excited for them in July when that pops. That's gonna be a nice thing, and I think that'll be even more of a reinforcer. The glass half-empty, other piece of that though is, probably get 39 people up on the stage and give them a gift card.
We succeed in between.
Mr. Wells is gonna be like, what? So we'll have to get a little creative on that thing. Now, did we, we didn't finish the year, so it'll be interesting to see where would that be? But I feel like, yes, there probably would have been 250 to 350, 300, and more sprinkled in. But I don't know that it would, I mean, obviously it would change each sum, but I still feel like we would have been way over 12 people with perfect attendance, you know? 20 people aren't gonna throw that away. And we're coming back out of spring break with that short run Easter, going into testing is fun. Looking at year one, I think it was exciting, and our kids are gonna benefit. Especially if this transitions into next year, where every day is precious, after missing this much. So, just a little update on that. District budget, Kelly will be visiting, in new business about that. I had sent an email, we had met administratively, and made some tough recommendations. We're gonna visit with some teachers too to, it's put in the budget as far as a number where we're headed. But we also want to get teacher input, if there's other areas at which we can trim and get some perspectives. It was, it was Mr. Groner had sent an email out. Those are tough decisions. We literally met on Friday and went through a bunch of different things. And came back the weekend and had on the yes, no, maybe. Things went from immediate yeses to maybes to no, that's too important. A reading poll, we haven't done, that's too important, leave that in there, what can we do? And everyone, you know, it's hard in different buildings, you're giving up your thing. And everyone saw different groups giving things. Mark had sent out an email to all of us, and he's like, you know, kind of admitting, I was grumpy coming into this, but watching everyone kind of come together, I'm excited. You know, he's like, who's excited about budget cuts? I am, because, you know, care, and not that it's easy, but he goes, caring about kids is still great. Doing your best, doesn't cost a thing and all that, and knowing that our, the group will come together. What's a grim thing, we got creative, we got, I don't think our kids are gonna suffer to the extent that you would take a million dollars and make a kid suffer. There's things that we can't go for, forego for a long period of time. But in one year and stuff like that, that gives us time to transition into some staffing things. Because ultimately, like I said, you know, it's in a normal year, when it's 75 to 80% of your budget, that's what it is this year, but 70, 75% of your budget is personnel. Ultimately, on a number of years, that's what your reduction has to be on the personnel spend. Because if you're trying to take it all from textbooks, or all from technology, or all from cap, you're gonna end up with the roof relays, outdated technology, textbooks are pretty miserable. That's not true cost savings, you have to look to do things better and go down through attrition. No one's losing a job. You know, we're just gonna, as people retire, we're gonna get creative and ask people to take on a little bit more, but not to where we're gonna run people off. We can just work smart, you know, hopefully not run people off. Return to athletics in school. Our plan is to return to school. I visited the superintendent today, that's what we're focused on. We'll have some contingency plans. I see us moving each week, kind of moving forward, even from a public standpoint. Today, I visited Rotary, and I kind of went through some of that, and all the feedback I've given that is, good, we're coming back. Now, the health department asked, you know, how are we gonna handle if somebody has it? That's our next thing that we have to put in place in the next 30 days is, what is our response when a child has it? You know, what is a sports team response, all those things? I just gave this to you, I received an email from Dr. Kirchhoffer, he's the head of our superintendent's group, shared, this came from the Missouri Center for Public Health, minimum school opening, closing recommendations, just for you to read and kind of get some thought. So, I've invited Mr. Schott, our new activities director. He's technically not working yet, but we're getting our full use out of him. To, he's been meeting with the athletic directors, and just gonna give the board a brief update on return to athletics, and kind of what the plan is, initial plan.
And I can leave, when we come up here or stay on here?
No, you come up.
Okay. I made copies of these for everybody, if you guys wanted to go through it. It is kind of general right now, we are going to meet again on Tuesday next week, or actually Wednesday. Try to get all the final, kind of get all the final things in order. But on this, there's basically a waiver on the back that parents will have to sign before kids can return to the practice fields, the weight room. The second page is just merely guidelines, so I'm kind of going in reverse. But the second page are just guidelines that we've heard on news, we've heard the health department give us. Just social distancing, wash your hands, just general hygiene and things like that. But the first page on there, just letting the parents know that there, there is an inherent risk that their child could contract COVID. Here, I think it'd be very hard to try to track and see exactly how they have it. But it just gives a little brief overview of the parents. And just about, just kind of what I told you about the second and third page, the waiver that they have to sign. Kind of three layers as far as the signatures are, but the screening will be done at home by the parents. There's a list of the things and of the questions, just generally, temperature, difficulty reading those things that we've been getting used to hearing for the last two and a half, three months. And on here, if the student shows any signs, we get them home immediately. Obviously, our trainer has been sending things out through Mercy, Danny's been great with that. We just got, we actually, after we met on Tuesday this week, got home and he had sent another update. And some of the other schools use Mercy as well, so things already changed from the two hours we spent meeting to the afternoon, and now we're gonna meet again, because as you guys know, this thing's changing every week. And I think we're getting closer to being in a good spot, so. Hopefully, we can finalize it, but like I said, with the way things have been changing, hopefully it gets better sooner than later. And basically, the Mercy plans, it's a 13-page document, I didn't want to print the whole thing out, but they have things broken down into phases. And there's two different groups of phases. The contact-type sports and cheerleading, things like that, have a four-phase process. But since we're in a community where it's not really that bad right now, I believe we'll be able to start in on phase two on July 1st. So we'll have three phases to get to with the non-contact type of sports, just archery, anything like that. There are three phases, so they'll be, they'll only have to go through two phases kind of before we get back to home. So the goal is, hopefully by the time the players and the kids that are involved in activities in the fall, we'll be able to go full borer by that August 10th start date, that will, all the kids will show back out, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I was just reading through this, on screenings, you have number one and number two. Under number two, and I had to reread it twice, because it didn't make sense to me at first. If a student has a positive finding on a daily screening, they cannot attend any activity that day, students will not be allowed back until subsequent day, when they do not have a negative screen, have documentation demonstrating that they test negative, or a note. So in between the negative screening and the documentation, should there be an or in there? Or do they have to have that negative screening with no symptoms?
The way that we talked about it, that if we do have to send them home, if they are positive, they'll have to go through most likely a two-week isolation type of thing. Go back, get another test, make sure, and it has to be negative.
Right.
And then they'll bring that in with their...
Is this an and then?
But should it say and, or should it, it should be or?
There's a missing conjunction there.
Yeah, that's what, I had to reread that twice, because it sounded like they needed the negative test and a day with no symptom. I think there should be a or in there.
Well, there's a or, because it's a three-part.
It's between that part one and part two.
Subsequent day when they do not have a negative screen, have documentation demonstrating that the SARS or that COVID test is negative, or a note from their healthcare provider. So take it to...
But you're asking them, if you have a symptom, you need to go get a note from your doctor.
So one of those three things they'll need to have before they can return.
It's written a bit like a policy.
Yeah. No, I was just reading it, like, making sure I understood.
I understand.
Thank you, thank you.
One of the things that's really challenging, Mr. Schott's done a good job of this, is we're in a difficult spot, because our county's waiting until July 1st. The superintendent's made that decision. But we have Perrinville, who's in the conference, and not in the county, didn't attend any. They're practicing down in St. Genevieve. North County is in St. Genevieve. Farmington's doing basketball stuff. So we have, I mean, we have coaches who are chomping at the bit. And, I don't want to say angry, I'll put that out, but they're like, we're falling behind. And throughout the state of Missouri, there's a competitive balance and such. But there's a big, our issue, and our health department's issue in that their recommendations is because of our proximity to St. Louis. Is that's where, us in St. Charles, we play North County, but that 30, 40 miles makes a huge difference on the number of moms and dads that are going to work in St. Louis, and such as that. So, it's a little bit different, but I know, and they are chomping at the bit, and it is, keeping up with the Joneses, and they're doing it, why can't we? So, we're gonna try to get them going, and I visited Chris about this, this week, and I visited with Mr. Edwards. Is, my huge concern is the liability part of this, because inherently, we have a waiver. But if a person gets it, in society today, coaches are so focused on winning ballgames and coaching, they don't think about that they could be sued. You know, what did you do for my child, you didn't do this, and you did this. And we all think it won't happen to us until it does, and we don't know. And so we want to be cautious and protect them, and kind of perspective. We're gonna go, but let's also, from my point of view, I feel like there's some protection. I'm glad, me personally, that North County's doing well, probably. That Perrinville's doing those things. From a superintendent, not that I don't want people to think of the Ozarks, but that helps make that determination, go back to school, what happened? You know, those type of events actually, in my mind, have to occur, because it gives future. That helps a school open in August, that people gathered, and, you know, there wasn't a mass out there. That sports teams in rural Missouri were getting together, and there hasn't been a huge one. That helps us go things, and provides a layer of protection, rather than us be the first ones out there outside of St. Louis. And there has to kind of be that first. And we're rolling out there doing it. We are one of the first, you know, summer schools starting up, we're gonna be running a group. Athletically, we're gonna be with the county, kind of seeing those things. But he's done a great job trying to manage people who are chomping at the bit.
They are, they're chomping, they're writing.
Frustration.
What happens, I mean, we know what we'll do in case a student gets COVID. What about, what if one of our coaches gets?
Well, it'll probably be the same protocol.
I mean, the same protocol that...
Similar, but they will go home for the 14 days, because they're an employee, and...
I guess I worry about what will, you know, who takes over then to coach the kids? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Assistance and such as that. But my fear, and I don't, it was brought up, is these are the things that we have to work through in the next month, is what happens if two kids on the Hillsborough team have COVID? I could see them shutting down the entire football team. But it further complicates it, what happens if they find out on Sunday, but they just played DeSoto? So DeSoto's getting shut down for 14 days. You know, but that's gonna have a carryover. If that's occurring on the football field, is that shutting down class? You know, if a student gets it in class, or a teacher gets it? Those are the things that we're gonna meet the eye on from the health department, that I, I don't think they fully know. Is that's gonna be, if a coach or something gets it, we're doing the best we can with the information that they have, the ADs are doing that, but that's, we're asking like, okay, we're opening. What is, is this treating it like the flu? Are we treating every, we don't send everyone home. Kid comes out with flu, or are we sending a note like on the headlights thing? Or are we shutting down school for 14 days and getting some of those verification? So the coach is gonna be like a player on that type of thing, and then we have an assistant in all of our coaching groups. But more than likely, if the coach has it, it may end up impacting the team as well. Depending on the contact. And that also may, I was just telling Coach Schott this, may impact how you practice. Do you literally have to practice with one group that may end up as your JV, not ever practice against the varsity, in case they have to play a varsity contest? I don't know how, I'm not saying that, but it's just, it'll be interesting to see how this lays out. But, then you take it a step further, and if they threw that, all right, you don't practice together, but then they're gonna ride home in the same car again, so. One of the things that was brought up, those major professional sports haven't figured it out yet. So, and they have a lot more money than us and whatnot, so that's gonna be kind of, it'll be, oh, we feel, hey, we're moving forward, so we will take that. We will, we'll respond to whatever gets thrown at us, but at least we're playing the game.
I like that we're laying down the expectations, right? With the parents and the students, where they come back for any athletic or activity in July.
Probably a waiver like this will be associated with coming to school.
Right.
Because we have to, there's inherent risk of going to first grade.
But for anybody who's just uncomfortable, that's their decision, they're not assigned it, not to come back, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll jump into new business then. The first item has to do with physicals. Do I have a motion to allow two-year physicals that were authorized by physicians to apply to the 2021 school year?
I'm in.
Thank you, Renee, and then Amy. Any discussions on that issue? Okay, all in favor, put the motion, raise your hand. Okay, the next issue has to do with our new budget, preliminary budget. And Kelly, I think has given everybody their budget.
Hopefully.
And she's probably going to share all kinds of fun things with us.
We've had a lot of information already, many emails, some press, things we've been sending out. It's a crazy budget year. Craziest one I've had in the 17 years I've been doing this, so I hope I never have another one like this.
We just wanted to challenge you.
It's been a challenge, and I don't think it's gonna end like today, we're doing a book, so. This year will be a lot more fluid than it has been in your tax, just because, I don't think the state, the state does not know, just like the health department doesn't know. The state doesn't know what their revenue's gonna look like. Taxes were pushed to July, so they didn't get all this revenue that they would normally have gotten, so. Sales tax and all that kind of thing. Sales tax actually hasn't been impacted a whole lot, because people are... So that's good. But we have had to do a lot of last-minute maneuvering. And as you know, we just had a meeting with the principals Tuesday to make the decisions, and they're kind of blending everything into what I already had. I think I've had four MOASBO meetings with like, who they consider the experts throughout the state on the school finance, and then talking to the districts, and just telling them what to spend, what state revenue might look like. So, anyway, I will jump in to kind of what I had included in this budget, kind of the factors that I worked off of, the main factors as far as revenue and expenditure goes. For revenue, our local taxes actually are coming in really, really well, or they did this year, better than I anticipated. So that's good. But I was conservative next year, and I used a collection rate of 91%, which is a little low from what we typically see, but I'm gonna be conservative. I don't know, when people go pay their taxes, I don't know what's moving for them towards the end of the year. And I used an increase in assessed valuation, and a lot of home sales, so I think that could really go up maybe a little more than that. If people are out there buying some stuff, it could help that personal property side of things. As far as state revenue, there was a lot of discussion on how to budget for the different factors that you can apply within like our state revenue, which is different pieces. And the factors, the dollar factors apply to ADA numbers. So there's been a lot of discussion on what each dollar amounts to use in the formula calculation. I think the county superintendent's had a vote, or you know, some fairly low ones, I think. It'll be a little bit, but I don't want to be too aggressive, and then we all short on the revenue side, that would be bad. So I did state funding, with the state, the, our main formula payment, the state advocacy target of $6,200. Before all of this happened, we were at $6,370, and that's a big difference. That's a really big difference. So, I applied that... So I applied that into the revenue numbers. Classroom trust fund, we estimated low at 325. I'm hoping, because the casino just opened at the beginning of the month, that that will help aid in the revenue that we get from the state. But really between the state adequacy target and the classroom trust fund monies, those two can add it together for our total calculated payment. So it's kind of a slight opinion as to which budget, where they reduce, move that around. As far as proxy revenue, we estimated that at 975. I really think proxy has been coming higher than that because sales are good right now in the state of Missouri. Proxy applies at groceries and other state sales taxes do not. So we're reaping a little bit of that benefit because people are out there buying groceries because they want to be, all that type of thing. So still conservative numbers. And when our state revenue is about 40, 40 to 45% of our budget, we have to be conservative. Beyond that, as far as federal revenue goes, I put CARES money in there. We actually just got those vacations that came in and we received our first chunk of it. It should be about 75% of our initial allocation. That's, they calculated that based off of our Title I funds. So we were able to apply 75% of that, which is about, I think our total allocation was 333,000. So hopefully we'll just backfill some salaries that we spent. And hopefully that'll make up some of that hole that we didn't give on state revenue these past few months. I D A and title programing funds are estimated to be approximately the same next year. Slightly higher, a little bit higher, but nothing significantly. We may get some additional CARES money also through the county. The county got a 26 million dollars, 26 million dollars. And hopefully they're going to give some of that to the schools. I think they did get it if they will. We just don't know what that looks like yet. That will help for next year, but that's not in our budget. And then I have revenue for those kickbacks or get on the interest that we pull on to the bonds. QZ and QSA. So beyond that expenditures, we did, I included the step on salary spend for all to have. We had a slight increase of dental and vision insurance. So about 5% I calculated on that. I don't know that we ever got a firm number from them because those bids didn't like.
Yeah, it's in that 507.
Yeah. But dental and vision is kind of a small portion of what we pay in the medical. That's our biggest thing. So property liability, workers' comp, I increased 5% on the actual billing. We took away the credit, so that's a good sound number that I have in there for that. I, we had, Liz and I visited a lot and we budgeted additional funds for tuition because we don't know how many kids might want to do online learning if they have that flexibility this year. I think there's a lot of online, we signed for that. But listening to this case, we're going to have an increased amount of that online learning. So we budgeted for that. Bus purchase and leases, that's mainly lease, but we still have a final payment on the three buses that we got via grant last year. And then our E C S E lease. And then I budgeted just in case one of our buses has problems. I budgeted a modest increase in our utilities. We saved a lot of money on utilities to end this year. So it's going to be kind of hard to predict because this year was kind of an anomaly. But I do have that in there. Food and service, they're probably going to be a free service. June high, she's going to hold off on that till maybe December. Final bond issue expenditures are in the budget. Payments on outstanding debt. And then I also budgeted for bridal bridge. That's new in our budget this year. So we have, I had the budget for utilities over there and some maintenance expenses. So I put that in. I also budgeted for the ag program because most of, they have a C D grant for that. So we will have some expenditures on that. We did have our instructional budget, site-based meetings in February with the principals. And we pulled back on their budgets by 25% and they were, they were good. They're going to try to not spend that money until later, maybe December when we start getting the full program. Beyond that, do we have any questions for you? I don't know regarding the budget. The one thing that is not in there are the budget summaries. I'm going to try and get those to you next week. But because we changed our instructional budgets, they kind of had to restructure the way that those read. So I'm giving them a little bit of time to effect. I will email those out and I'll be more than happy to put them, you know, if you want to give me your book back after the meeting in two weeks, I can refund them in four weeks.
I have a question. In the back under expenditure, I don't know what page it is, but it's under transportation services. Summer school driver salary, summer school, a bunch of summer school bus driver stuff. Is that for last summer or this summer? Maybe I'm looking at it wrong. It's quite a few pages back. It's towards the back, couple of pages from the appendix, like two or three pages from the appendix.
It's early childhood, because of early childhood.
It says 2552, transportation services. And then if you, maybe it's the hand.
I still budgeted for fuel because.
The special education.
Yeah, we do, we do, we'll have U P S E or any, actually not just U P S E, any E S Y.
So that's what that's for? Okay. That's the driver's salary, social security, Medicare, all of that is for those drivers?
You know, that's actually down under the mask.
Better than in the update, I should.
Yeah.
So the facilities committee didn't ever get to meet yet this year. It's because of various circumstances. But it had come up just before Christmas that we were going to be hopefully budgeting for some much needed maintenance issues like the roofs for like one year. Some of them were one year away from the recommended time until they were going to cost major bucks to repair it along.
Right.
How is that, has that been cut? Has it been suspended or?
Well, we are doing some, we're prepared to give the bond money.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and one of the things too, actually, a couple of things related to this is I took a picture of this, actually sent it to Josh. He's like, you didn't move money in fund four, the capital projects into the teacher fund? You know, like.
Well, years and years of raiding that fund, what put us in this?
And that was, and that's, that's my perspective. I texted Josh back and that's, Kelly and I visited, is in order for us to sustain this long term is we can't just keep, the roofs are going to fail. And we have to, just like our own house, I can't keep going up to the, I can't keep spending cable and not replace my windows or fix my roofs because I have to do that. And so our plan is we left the money in fund four, the capital projects, which is I think could be atypical this year. A lot of budgets are on the state because we know that. We want to balance it like this was a budget that could last for 20 years. And you're, you know, I mean, like it has to get to where if we had to sustain. Yeah, you're able to still, you know, next year, a lot of this, you know, 400,000 of a million dollars in cuts is technical. But through attrition, we have to transition that six or seven people or whatnot if we're able to do custodial differently or whatnot. But you have to leave your capital the same because those expenses are still going to be here.
So there was one more issue that I, I can't remember and I kind of wish I brought it with me. But Ray had given us something that told us that the coolant they were using for their A C system is going, has been banned already. It's not being sold anymore. And they're going to run out of their stockpile by, I forget the year, it wasn't too far in the future. It was like a couple of years possible. And he was already, he was also saying, he had mentioned before he even got elected, which now has been some time, that they're, they could fix anything with the parts if they have the parts, because they're not even making the parts anymore or providing the parts for these A C systems. And so he's talking about, you know, at least, I, I think it was like maybe up to a million dollars. I forget how much it would cost to replace the H bag, but.
Oh, it's.
It was a significant, it was a significant capital outlay. And he was talking about a bond issue and I'm like, you really need to get away from borrowing every time for known expenses that, I mean, we knew this was coming up. We knew for years this was coming up and we didn't save up for it. And now all of a sudden we're like, oh, credit card, you know? So that was just one thing I thought, is that on your guys' minds, you know?
Well, it probably won't be purchased this year, but we're.
Right, but I mean, but I mean, like, that's how you get these things without debt is by saving up, you know, for them over time.
And that's why.
And this budget's super lean, like nothing extra, nothing like.
Yeah. But I just wanted to see if that was in the thinking or not.
Yes, well, that's why.
It's something that seemed to have been kind of ignored for a long time.
That's why it's 10 cents, we left the 10 cents in there, in the levy rather than, because that could be moved into operating and all of a sudden those funds are spent on.
Yeah, once we put money in capital, it doesn't come out of that fund.
Right, so we're still dedicating back to that.
I appreciate this was a lot of numbers.
Yeah, it is a lot of numbers.
And it's going to change.
Information. But I mean, it's, it's.
No, thank you. But I know it's also going to change a lot. Thanks, thank you guys for running through it all and you're going to probably look over those numbers 100 more times.
So I guess none of the lawyers.
No, that's okay. I think.
My, my, my two questions.
Those rotation schedules kind of went by the wayside when all of this.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I figured I just, I guess I'll keep her getting it up too though, keep it.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I'll visit with Ray because I don't think it, I thought.
He's so mild mannered about it that, I mean, you know, whenever it was just like, oh, okay. And then nothing got done. He was just kind of.
And I thought he kind of indicated they were in a good place with their things right now because they had fixed some units or.
Well, like I said, we haven't met all year, so it's been six months of no.
But when I visited with him, it was not in depth about anything really big to identify with that.
My, my, my real broad two questions would be, okay, I, I could see, like, for instance, Illinois recently got an undisclosed yet amount of bailout money from the Fed, practically an interest free loan basically for their troubles. And they're easily the worst state, managed state physically in the country. So I don't know if we'll get any of that, but if we did and we got, you know, somehow the state was made whole through a loan or something like that, hey, Illinois is like manna from heaven for those guys. But if we got excess revenues, would that go to reserves?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I just wonder what happened if we got more money. I mean, and the teachers would be like, hey, it wasn't as bad, you know, like it splashes front page news. Oh, Missouri gets.
And we're always able to transfer money from general within, there's some limits. So we have a seven, what's called 7% transfer that we can move money from general fund over into the capital to try and build some balances.
So if, on the good side.
We have that plan because.
I was going to say, on the good side, is there a plan if things surprise very pleasantly? I say pleasantly, there's always a long-term cost of this and I could go into that, but I won't. But if things surprise pleasantly, you know, the plan is this, you know?
Right, and we can ask, yeah, I'll sit down with Ray and we'll work on that.
And then the other way is, of course, I think there's a lot of us underestimating of risk right now. It's funny is it's just about the time school starts is when unemployment benefits are going to terminate a lot of people and the gravy train is over. And so if things surprise to the downside, like I know you're saying they're conservative, but things can always get worse.
Absolutely.
If they surprise to the downside, what, what do you, do you guys have an idea what would happen?
Well, I'm even hoping it's not going to go, we were.
But I mean, if it does though.
Well, then we go in and it gets even, at that point, because in there comes cash flow, the reality, people lose jobs.
Okay. I, I, I wanted to know where, you know, what was their.
At future, people will lose, you have to, then it's, here's a bank slip. Then it becomes real world business. Our plan is, is even as we get into executive, is we have a retiree in that, is we're not going to replace that custodial. And so even as we go through here, as these numbers are based on our expected reductions this year, but I anticipate further reductions as we go through and not replacing different staff or looking at how to do things differently to work smarter. There's a trickle down effect to that, that quite honestly, I'm going to go glass half full on this is we're doing it out of necessity now to learn, we need to do some things differently to become more efficient. Because with that amount of money in our budget, our backs are against the wall all the time when it comes to, when you talk about teacher salaries, that always comes up, right? We don't get, but Hillsborough has a heavy classified staff. We have a lot of things that we do our business a little bit, and I've talked about this, our business a little bit different with different, whether it be a number of secretaries or aides.
In house transportation.
In house transportation and how we do benefits. And, you know, if you worked over 20, 25 hours, you were guaranteed the full benefits of 6,500 bucks, 6,800 bucks. Is we have to be right sized in that area. Even coming out, take this out of it is as minimum wage goes up to 1275 in several years, our starting salary for a bus driver is 1320. Because as a district, we cannot have our starting bus driver driving children to be 55 more cents or whatever, more than my 15-year-old can make at McDonald's. Is we have to get in that 15, 16 dollars an hour is where, at Hillsborough, it's a competitive wage to get the right person.
Now, that would depend upon the situation too, right?
Absolutely.
If we're really in, I mean, if the current unemployment numbers hold up, they'll be like, they'll be happy to have a job.
No, I don't disagree.
And in that case, we might not need, yeah, it sounds hard to us, but you know, your 15-year-old might not be working at McDonald's because there's just no jobs.
Absolutely, well, it's just that long-term to be fiscally is we have to have our personnel in line to, if your revenues go down by a certain percent, 70% of that, it can't go up to where your personnel is 85 or 90% of your budget. The lights are the lights. The roof is the roof, the buses cost the buses. And so to be able to respond to that is what we're going to do. And hopefully we get additional savings throughout the year. I mean, ideally is on these revenues, our balances, if they land at 16 or 17%, then that's awesome. But that doesn't mean like next year, like we, it's, we got to be very calculated and continued is what are the cuts we make this year? Oh, it didn't really change what I did, but our kids didn't lose out. Well, then let's continue that because that's how, it's just a better, more efficient way of doing things. All right, we find out we can't live without that, okay? It's constantly evaluating those things to do that. And planning for the worst because you're absolutely right, it could go even worse. That's why we're running at 6,200, that's on the S A T. Because I don't want it to go anywhere, but it can go to.
I don't feel like it's like projecting like a rogue planet hitting Earth in the sense that right now, even though we wouldn't know, things are unspeakably wretched economically, like unprecedentedly wretched. I mean, it really can't get worse.
No, I.
It really is only because of the stimulus right now that no one's seeing. You know, they're making more money than they did when they were employed.
Hopefully they recover quicker rather than slowly.
Well, and a good point on that though is that this economy was in trouble in September of last year, three months before anybody on earth had coronavirus. I mean, we were already had a repo blowout, the crisis there, the Fed was lowering rates. I mean, we were already had a repo blowout, the crisis there, the Fed was lowering rates again, panic and lower rates to try and ease credit conditions. I mean, things were scary. And that was before, like, so we had, getting back to normal is still getting back to a deteriorating situation though. In my, and I wanna be, I, I'm being a little bit, you know, bummer here, but I just. And that's on a macro level, that's not specifically Jefferson County, but a lot of ways, we're like very average on absolutely everything that happens.
December will be a key month for us, because that'll give us, for Jefferson County, indicator is, what is our unemployment, what is our financial, our communities, are they paying their taxes? You know, the unemployment would have ran out, are they going back to work? December is a key month and that's where, and Kelly has asked in conjunctions, come what you're talking about, this is the budget. We have school flies that we have in here. So twenty-five percent reduction with a grain of salt is we didn't have the fourth quarter. So there should still be paper in the, in the offices and such as that, is, if, don't make any expenditures unless you absolutely have to.
Till January, December or January.
Because if you spend it, oh, it's our budget, spend it now is, then we're able to react. Hold up, be, just because it's in your budget, don't spend it. And also, and some of our messaging with staff too, because when you hear twenty-five percent reduction and as an educator, is, and I will visit with teachers, don't, when we come back, I need everyone to bring in a ream of paper, you know, to the parents. Right? Is I'm gonna need more, you know, is, I know, because I was a hoarder too, is, this is the time, this is the time that, hey, that construction paper that's actually turning colors and fading, let's pull that out, kidding, let's use that stuff up. We're gonna get teachers what they, we're asking them to be resourceful, pull together, and we have this stuff, but also, just, and just be cognizant, and I know that they will. I mean, everyone, I don't know, I mean.
People are feeling it on a personal level, you know, so I think it's more relatable.
And it is, it's a lot like, trying to make a budget, it's a lot like Indiana Jones running in front of the boulder, you know, trying to gauge your speed and hope you don't run over, but you never know what's gonna happen until you breach it. I, I just wanted to know what the.
Also very.
And that's the plan on June eleventh, you know, and that's where we'll be in constant communication. If it gets super worse, we'll have to respond accordingly, you know? There's some of us are there like, oh, I'm doing loans and make payment.
So we're not, or we're, just to be clear, we're not thinking along those lines right now?
No, I don't feel like we will have to do that.
Because I mean, that is just eating your own tail.
Yes.
Which is also why I.
That's a.
Yeah, okay. That's a huge issue, and a lot of it, there was talks about further budget cut in July and see what hits schools on, and it's hitting us, is that last, those payrolls for the school year go out for us the last week of June. So you're getting, the teachers are getting their July paychecks. So there's a huge head and that's where, we're in a different financial position to be able to sustain it. But some, they're like going to bake the alarm in payroll.
Oh, man, that's terrible.
Well, we are getting the, you know, like I said, we've got that CARES money, which we then can cover for the quarter of one of our payrolls. But it backfills a little bit.
Yeah.
If nothing helps more than not helping.
Yeah.
Yes.
So in this budget, we kept the OSROs.
Was that good?
Kept the OSROs, and now we're working through potentially, and that'll be like another win. That can be offset potentially with the county CARES there. But it's in our budget to maintain that, so.
And we didn't take, like, there's a lot of technology stuff that.
Yeah, I saw the cardboard.
Cool some of the table. But Aaron felt like that would be okay. So work with less before.
Especially if you're gonna be in person, voice still works.
Right, absolutely.
Which is still, and teachers are still able to do that, they don't.
If worst came to the worst, we kind of know that people have devices at home and we have enough to get to the ones that don't, so.
Yeah, that's where, I guess between our last meeting when Ted were gonna bring, table that, so at the next meeting, we're pulling that from the table. We had long talks, I mean, it was like, Aaron sitting back there, I don't see it was like six or seven or even, so it was like a hundred, seventy-five to twenty.
How much is gonna be like a hundred and eighty thousand, right? The Chromebooks.
Yeah, the Chromebooks, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand, just, yeah.
And so basically, we would have enough, where we'd be like the primary short as far as the number. But, you know, Drew doesn't need one, so he just can go to someone there. And we, my perspective on that, that's what, kind of backed off and there were, you know, but I, is, we're planning to go back to school. That's a lot of money to expend. If we're back, then they're like, it's like buying a fiber extinguisher, they don't, is if we can, you know, I mean, they're necessary, but can we bridge the gap without going one-to-one and doing that? Or, and if all of a sudden we have to get creative, okay, then we cross that bridge and we get there, rather than.
But even long-term, you know, demographics are going stable to down and not up. So our class size, I mean, our student body as a whole, the one-to-one should be easier to achieve over time since our population size in our school is stable or shrinking.
At the lower levels, the, the bigger issue with the devices as well is, we give them a device, it's the access. If you don't have the data plan to support it, it doesn't do any good anyhow. And that really isn't solved for us right now. And so you really, the haves and the have-not type situation becomes very, from a socioeconomic thing on that is, we have to bridge that gap, so that, buying them didn't solve our problem. We'd be good to go to have full instruction and every kid would get, it'd be like the regular thing. That's just not the case, so.
And we will have to buy them, I would guess, next summer, right? Because we have, we have a bunch of them going out of support. So, I mean, it's like textbooks, we're just putting it off right now to another year. My face ends up better than, maybe that's something we can go back in. I'm optimistic, I think we're optimistic. We're gonna have a bee-shaped recovery.
Honestly, I think that's the least likely outcome, unfortunately, but.
Maybe pessimistic.
She'll bounce.
Yes.
True. Yeah.
Bring your crystal ball.
But the budget, the budget is made on a pessimistic.
It really is. It's pessimistic, it's on. This is so funny though. Anyway, and, and, you know, my hope would really be that we can start to grow those balances because if we were at twenty-five percent, this would be our rate of day, right? Like, time to spend it, rate of day time. We'll get there, it just takes a little bit of time. If you have any questions, if you might work through this over the next few weeks, just make a call, shoot me an email, take me off the model.
Enjoy it.
Great. Um, but I'll be back.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we will be approving this June twenty-sixth. That's the next board meeting.
And I will also email you the budget numbers.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
All right, so that concludes our new business. I'd like to have, we're gonna have a motion here in a moment to enter into executive session. We'll take a roll call vote and recess into executive session in accordance with RSMO six-ten-point-two-zero-one as agenda items relate to hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of employees and individually identifiable personnel records. So do I have a motion? Thank you Beth.
Second.
And John. And I have seven o'clock on the clock. Any questions or discussion before the roll call? Okay, roll call then, please.
Mr. Cruz is absent, Mrs. Oshie?